I shall call this meeting to order. I'll let Joe sit down and then we'll, or stand rather, and we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All greetings, everyone, council. Uh, we shall have roll call, please.
Councilmember Crails?
Yes.
Savi?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bellixon? Mayor Wallers?
Yes. Okay, um. Mayor Wallers has selected a quote for the day, of course, like normal, and this one is going to take us back about forty years. Um, it happens to come from our former president Ronald Wilson Reagan. He was the fortieth president of the United States of America. And his campaign pledge was to reduce people's reliance on government aimed to reinvigorate the American dream. He served two terms from nineteen eighty-one to nineteen eighty-nine. And here's his message to us. If we ever forget that we are one nation under God, then we will be a nation gone under. Okay, uh, I thought that was appropriate, given we just celebrated Independence Day. Um, we shall move on with the approval of tonight's agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve and entertain any additions or corrections.
I will move approval of the agenda as presented.
I'll say again.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda as is. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, citizens' comments, uh, this is the time if anybody would like to approach the council, seeing no one in the audience. I shall move on to the next item, while we have Jay, of course, here, he's somebody, but. So recognized, Jay, so recognized. You're certainly welcome to come up and chat with us if you'd like. Um, we have no public hearings tonight. We shall move on to reading and approval of our, uh, June twenty-fifth regular meeting minutes.
I will move approval of our June twenty-five regular minutes.
I'll say again.
All right, we have a motion and a second before us to approve our June twenty-fifth regular meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And then we have the condensed version of the minutes from June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll move approval of the condensed version of the June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four minutes.
I will second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the condensed version of the meeting minutes from June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We shall move on to the consent agenda, which consists of the audit of city bills, pay estimate number two, Joe Riley Construction, pay estimate number two, Nor Sun Construction LLC, the March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four tree board minutes, the, uh, April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four tree board minutes, the gambling reports, application for exempt permit for the deer hunters, and then we have the Morris transit report. I guess I can move on the approval of the items on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the items on the consent agenda. I'll bring it back to the council for any discussion on any of the items on, uh, that are listed there. Would there be any discussion by any members of the council? It looks like, uh, we had just over a million dollars on the, uh, month, the last month, so. Paid a few things off, that's good.
Line item forty-four, uh, is that progression payments or just lump sum there?
For the two trans buses?
Yeah.
And that's total?
Okay.
And then, um, we get hundred percent back on one and then ninety percent on the other.
Yep.
We have to pay them first and then submit for them afterwards.
Understood.
How far backlog are those buses from?
They were ordered end of twenty twenty.
So we still have several in line coming?
Um, we have, well, electric bus is still coming, and then we were able to get a twenty twenty-three off of the lot, so. We just are submitting in for a twenty twenty-five bus, and then we'll see how backlog that is. Historically, we try to do every other year, just to keep the fleet moving, but.
So this will put us current up to the electric? Thank you.
Looks like we made a down payment for that John Deere, uh, line item forty-nine for, to RDO for hundred and fifty thousand. That's just the down payment, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion in the council? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second, uh, to approve that consent agenda items. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we shall move on, next up is petitions, requests, and communications. Uh, we have a request before us from the tourism board. Um, let's see, tourism board recommend- recommendation was to approve. Um, I will just turn back over to Becca, maybe you want to just speak to that one a little bit?
Um, so the tourism board didn't meet this last month, they did do though, they had one request from, um, the R U S C kinship mentoring, five K kinship and miracle mile walk. Um, so we chose to do an email vote to see if they wanted to, um, recommend using advertising dollars for this event. Um, the vote was a three to two in favor of using the dollars, um, lodging tax dollars for the event and advertising at the lowest tier. I would recommend that the city council not use funds for that. Um, I don't feel that these are what is intended for these, these lodging tax dollars. Um, they are there to, um, promote Morris as a tourist destination. Um, feel this is more, even in their application, they said it was, um, to get people between zero and twenty-five miles from Morris. So it's not that draw that we'd usually use these, these tourism dollars for. So it really doesn't support, um, what these dollars are intended for.
Was there any discussion with the email vote about, like, reasonings why someone voted yes or no either way?
Um, one, one was just a yes. The other stated that we had a lot in our fund, so we might as well use some dollars. Um, and the other one just said yes at the lowest level. Um, the ones that said no, there were only one that said, I agree with you, it's not what they're intended for.
Sure.
I guess if you kind of, my take on it is if you deviate from the, you know, the standards that you put in place, then you're kind of opening yourself up for other events and so forth, so. I think it's wise to stay consistent with what you put in place, but.
I think there's plenty of money in there to do these things with, it's just the question of whether we can. There was always Blaine's, there was always Blaine's deal on it too, is, um, just because it's there doesn't mean that we can use it, is it, it, there's gray areas in, in, in what we want to do. I think that we should use it for as much as humanly possible, or to use those funds up, but if we feel that those, this isn't, not an area that meets its qualifications, then I would suggest that we, we stay away from that.
Would you like a motion on that? To approve or disapprove or whatever?
I would.
I'll just throw it back to the council, I mean, I don't want to close the discussion, if there's more discussion, that's fine. If not, we'll just entertain a motion to approve, and then we can, I'll probably put that to a roll call vote when we get our motion here.
I will move not to authorize the use of lodging tax dollar or funds for the use of this here project that's before us.
I guess I can second that motion. Um, any further discussion before I ask for a vote?
I guess I would state, I mean, Hough, you're, you're basically stating it because it's going to draw people within a smaller range of Morris and not drawing people farther from here, is that it? Yet, so I mean, is there, uh, a distance that we're going to set the standard at?
I think the distance was about sixty miles.
I believe, yeah, it was between that sixty or ninety, I can't remember exactly, but we do have it on the.
Yeah, so there is a standard to go along, yes, okay.
The goal is to get people, uh, heads on beds, we always kind of talk about that, you know, it's, try to bring people in so they stay in our hotels and support our restaurants, things like that. So that's the, kind of, the driving, really the driving goal there.
And this is more of a local event?
Yep.
That's.
Yeah, I guess they didn't trap, they did, must not anticipate pulling people from too far, so.
That would be different, like the Tin Man that up in New York that pulled them in from like all over the place, so. That's more, that's more of an appropriate use for it, okay, I would, okay, thank you.
All right, any further discussion? All right, we have a first, uh, we have a motion and a second before us. I'll ask for a roll call vote on that motion, please.
Councilmember Savi?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bellixon? Crails?
Yes.
Mayor Wallers?
Yes. Okay, we will move on to ordinances and resolutions. Uh, we have a resolution before us, appointing election judges. First of all, shout out to all those that volunteered. It's nice to see that we have a pretty full list of volunteers. You know, we moved to, back from six precincts down to three. And I think in hindsight, that was a pretty good move, because we're, we even struggled to try to find judges for three, let alone six.
Right.
Any other discussion on the, uh, appointed?
Oh, I, I think it's great that we have people that are doing it, and the people that are doing it, thank you. And, uh, I'll move, uh, approval of the resolution appointing the election judges.
I will second.
Okay.
Just a quick question, is there compensation for the judges? There is?
No, chiefs obviously get more, because they work the whole day from beginning to end, and then the chief's got to get further training and hours to work.
Thank you.
All right, any others, further discussion on the, uh, resolution appointing the election judges? We have a first and a second before us. If there's no other discussion, I will ask for a roll call vote on that resolution, please.
Councilmember Crails?
With a sincere thank you, yes.
Savi?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bellixon? Mayor Wallers?
Yes. Okay, we shall move on to the city managers' reports and recommendation. Uh, first up is, uh, her twenty twenty-five preliminary budget guidance. I'll turn it over to Becca, and she can maybe walk us through that.
Yeah, okay, so, um, going through what we're looking at for next year's budget, um, so, we'd like to present a final tax levy with a three to seven percent increase in the general fund levy along with the required tax levies for debt services. Um, the preliminary will, will likely be a little higher than that, um, since we're not able to, to lower once we set the preliminary or go higher, I'm sorry, we can go lower, we can't go higher. Um, we still have the tax abatement for drips automotive, so you'll see that again. We haven't see, received the numbers for the twenty twenty-five, um, LGA. So I'm sure before the preliminary is due, they'll have that out, um, I would assume here quite soon. Um, we're looking at, uh, budgeting. I think I, I put this at ten, but we may budget for fifteen percent for health insurance, just because health insurance has been, um, quite high. Uh, with Peep, we did a two-year, um, you have to stay with them two years, it's a two-year contract, so last year was our first year. Um, this year will be our second year, the last time we had the second year, they went up about forty-nine percent, so. We're hoping they don't go up that high again, and it'll only be about, you know, that ten to fifteen range. Um, but we'll, we'll have to see how that, that comes. We're gonna maintain our current workforce, we shouldn't see a big increase in, in different areas. Uh, we are at our police contract, we're looking at negotiations for next year. Um, I'm sure our preliminary budget will show an increase, um, hopefully before we have to set that, we'll kind of know where there's the county and, and us are sitting on, um, on that next contract.
Have they given you any indications on what we're looking at?
We are going to be meeting with them soon, I can't remember exactly the date or.
So I believe that one of the dates was the twenty-fifth, it was like a Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday, like.
Do we set it for sure?
Twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six.
I don't think we did a final set.
I don't think we did, I mean, I think we just have some open dates that we were.
Yeah.
That was a, a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday was the dates that you had sent, and I replied back to you that I'm open, whatever, whatever works.
Yeah, so we'll set that date, so in the next, next few weeks, we'll. I think that's already next week.
Unless somebody else is interested in serving on that, I'd more than willingly give it up, but I served on it last time and willing to do that again.
Yeah, so.
It's your chance, Zach.
I know, I was the same stock with you.
Sounds, sounds like I'm getting a little heated.
No, that's fine.
We are looking into a twenty twenty-five, uh, street projects, street water sewer project on the west side of town. So, um, Jeff Kuhn is still working on getting some preliminary numbers for that, uh, we talked to him today, he should be having that out at the end of the week. Um, to kind of see, and then have some discussion with council on assessments and, and different things.
What's the area he's targeting or we're looking at doing?
I'd have to get all of the, have to get all those streets, not, not on the west side of town.
Think it's specific to have.
That would be my, that would be my question, is if it was specific.
But the federal funding, we're not using that, we're not doing specific because of that, right?
Yeah. We could have, but we, we passed, and we're going to do seven, so, yeah.
I'll get it to you, it's not pulling up.
No, and if it, if he's expecting to have it by the end of the week, not that big of a deal, was just curious more than anything?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, we'll obviously renew or review again all our fees, um, in our revenue accounts to see uh, different fees that we need to, to look over. Um, we should really look at hangar rents and probably our storm, storm sewer fees. Um, you know, you put those into place for the MS four stuff. We do have some stormwater projects we'd like to look at. Um, with that, we'd like to, to start getting some revenue from, from the fees, just so we can, can manage some of those stormwater projects. Uh, wages, our union contracts are all renegotiated this year, so we really don't know, um, kind of where we're, we're sitting. We did get word that we're going to negotiate with both unions. Um, hopefully in the next few weeks, we'll have our first initial conversations. Um, so last year, they won't settle any, any lower than that five percent. Uh, so we are in the midst of that compensation study, kind of seeing where we, where we sit. Um, sometime here at the end of July, we'll have those results from all of that and get that to you guys and to them. Um, obviously, the biggest discussion last year was inflation, it's been pretty high this last year. And kind of our stance has always been that that's a general wage increase, and we don't follow what they set for COLA, because there's a lot of times that COLA's been, um, very little, and we've, we've had, you know, at least a three percent, two and a half percent increase. Um, so that's gonna kind of determine some, some factors with our budget.
Doesn't sound like a lot of room for negotiation when they say this is yet, I'm glad it's you doing that, not me.
Yeah, um, obviously with union contracts, we're, we'll have to be talking, uh, different, different benefits. Um, one of the new ones that will come up, um, is that new family and medical leave. Um, and then, uh, that, those, that one requires a point seven percent starting in twenty twenty-six. So some of that stuff, that's on them and us both have to pay into that, so, um.
Wasn't the increase in wages this year five percent?
That was this year, so this year, this, this now year for twenty twenty-five, we haven't.
No, I remember it was only a one-year deal, yeah.
We haven't discussed it yet.
I just wanted to confirm that it was five percent.
Yep. Um, there's no election in twenty twenty-five, so we'll shift some of our election funding that we had this year into some unallocated accounts. We can, um, have a little bit more wiggle room for other things.
Just a quick question on that point seven percent by the employer and the employee that's retained by the state, just like social security, so that will go away, and it's not that we're going to sit on it, the, the state will.
The state, yeah.
Will they actually, actually make you start doing it, or is it when the fund gets low enough, then it starts?
Nope.
Oh, so they're going to start out right away?
Yep.
See, I was under, under the assumption that there was a certain amount, like fifteen million or something in the fund, and there wasn't going to be any, any percentage paid until that got below a certain point, but.
Not from what I've been hearing.
Okay.
The talk was having a little bit of a pot to start, so that way if someone wanted to immediately, they, they could use whatever they.
Oh, what do you mean, somebody wants to? It's going to be floodgates open, that's going to be gone in a matter of six months.
But we're not going to start that point seven until January of twenty-six?
I don't think we're required to.
No, you're not, yeah, because the program doesn't start until then, yes.
Thank you.
Um, we just did our insurance renewal at the last, um, council meeting, so our work comp experience modification gave us a little bit better rates. Projecting that the fire relief annual benefit will increase that fifty dollars like it has in the past, um, few years. We, we'll probably look at another modest increase of three percent for our contribution to the community education and recreation and the Stevens County Economic Improvement Commission. Um, we'll provide at least two hundred thousand dollars for our capital outlay expenditures. Uh, we'll maintain the same policies for the franchise fee and the capital improvement fund. And, and then we'll, you know, a lot of, a lot of that is for the, the overlays and the seal coating. Um, we may look at the bike path, I know there was, like we had talked about last year, there is some spots that need to be fixed. Um, that we want to be able to qualify for a grant, because it's not an exorbitant amount of the, of the bike path that needs to be, to be done. Um, we need to, to look at continuing funding for tree maintenance. Uh, we did receive two separate grants for, for pruning trees and new trees in the next three years. Um, so we'll utilize this as an Emerald Ash Bore, has moved into our neighboring communities, we've, our counties, we've seen, we've seen that, so. Hopefully, these, for sure, these coming dollars will help with, um, planting some of those trees. Um, in here, I say we'll know this fall, we see the outdoor recreation grant, we heard word, um, yesterday that we did not receive the grant for the Wells Park bathrooms, we're going to have to look at, um, how we want to fund this and, into the next, um, year's budget.
We've discussed about getting some prices on just doing something on our own, have we gotten anything back on that yet?
I haven't gotten any final prices, no.
And we had talked about that the cost of doing that on our own would probably be about equivalent or cheaper, and we'd be able to do it how we wanted to do it instead of to state guidelines, so it probably would make more sense for us to try to find an avenue to go that route if we can.
Yeah.
Now we don't have a grant, I guess, now we know which direction we have to go.
Great, great, now we know. Um, we'll continue to look at handicap accessible projects in our parks and city property. Um, we'll look at the water sanit- sanitary sewer and stormwater fees. Um, I'm going to guess that with our big increase in our water and, and sanitary sewer, um, we will just have a modest increase this next year, but we do need to look at those stormwater fees. Um, those weren't increased last year, and like I said, we're looking at some projects, um, that need to be done. Um, if, if any of you have, um, talked to anyone by the, the townhomes over by the Hudson Inn, um, they get a lot of, of stormwater issues there, so looking at a project there, um, and trying to get grant dollars and everything else, we need to put in money to, to do these projects. Um, so putting a fee onto the stormwater, um, will be a way to, to get tho, that revenue to do some of these projects. Um, consideration should be made to look at replacement of lead lines in the city, so, um, we're obviously in the process of doing a survey of all residential lines, um, to, to see if they're lead or not, and then we're, um, hoping we'll get some state allocation money to, to fix some of those lead lines. Uh, we haven't heard back on the FEMA fire grant, firefighter grant, were you going to say something?
Yeah, on the lead lines, um, what is the, is it the city's? Are the lead lines all the way to the house or just from the street?
Street, the homeowners are responsible for the lead lines in their house, right, from the street to the house?
So what they're doing is looking at all of it, to see if they have lead lines from, from the house to our.
So what, what, what is the responsibility then, is it, is the homeowners from their house into the hookup?
So it is, but the, the state is kind of hoping that there is like a, from what I understand, some, some city dollars being spent to help cover some of those costs to, to replace some of these lead lines, and that's where it's like the state, we're hoping we'll get some dollars from the state to help with the program to get the lead lines out of town.
So are they, is it not going to really be mandated until there's enough dollars?
No.
No, it's going to be mandated.
Yeah. They just do things that don't need no dollars, yeah.
Uh, well, like anything else, it takes you four months to get a permit from, it's going to take us a long time to get it done.
Well, we have a lot of clay tile, I think, I know my, my house was built in fifty-four, and I have clay tile.
You're talking sewer line or water line? I think it's lead, water line coming out of the houses.
I can, I can speak to some of that.
Sure.
Where you live, uh, the water main was replaced, uh, in nineteen seventy-eight, on, uh, Eighth Street, you live?
Yep.
On Eighth Street, but the sanitary sewer was never replaced.
Okay.
But whenever the water mains were replaced in town, and I've, I've got a whole map of it, they were always put in copper all the way back to the curb stop, and then at that time, if there was a lead line, we would tell them they had a lead line, and I would say eighty percent of the time, the property owner would replace that at their own expense, from the curb stop back into their house.
Okay.
In those years, of course, we assessed the sewer and water. You know, there was no rans or anything like that, there was an assessment for the public main, and then the service lines going back to the curb stop. And then we would inform the property owners. So like the streets that have not been done as far as, uh, the water goes, which would be, uh, First Street, Third Street, Fourth Street on the east side, Fifth Street, Sixth Street, there's a good chance there's lead lines in these, because we never did those projects. Almost everything on the west side has been redone.
Okay.
With new watering and copper, and there could be the odd. With new watering and copper. And there could be the odd house that has a lead line.
So it shouldn't be a lot.
I don't think, they're, they're on this east side and this whole part of town.
Could be, yeah. I was, you know, when you talk about that, it's, it's, you know, oh, we're gonna do this. Well, then, you know, homeowner's like, oh, and all of a sudden you go up to them and say, well, you gotta replace this or what are we gonna do there? So just wanted to kind of get an idea.
A, a lot of cities like Javasame, when you did the water line, they, they went hit, hook up onto a lead line.
We did.
Oh, did you?
We did, yeah, before there was any, we would always encourage them not to, but there wasn't a political will back in those days to really force it down. There, you know, we all knew that lead lines were bad, but there was no public health sort of mandates like there's going to, there is now.
Good information, thank you.
Looked up to lead lines for sure.
Interesting.
And those records are all up the city shop.
Perfect.
Yeah, you can find them.
Um, moving on, we haven't heard back on the FEMA fire truck for that latter grant. So we'll continue, um, to kind of move forward and try and plan. Um, I know Brad was out there kind of going over with them their, um, trucks and kind of, um, looking at years and possible plan for moving forward. And he, he told me that when we go over, um, budget with, with him, that he'll have something for me on kind of what the plan is, um, or what they're proposing a plan for moving forward with their trucks. Um, Mindot is working on that Highway Nine sidewalk project. You know, they were saying how, uh, the funding's coming from Mindot, but the, uh, small amount of design and engineering, um, environmental impacts and any utility relocates. Um, when I talked to Jeff a few weeks ago and then, um, had a conversation with the Mindot gentleman, um, we may have an issue with the environmental stuff with, by where Jerry's U-Save is. So I, I have a lot more questions for him. We're meeting in August. Um, but that's, that's something will, um, if that project moves forward, we're gonna have to allocate some dollars to it and probably more dollars than we were expecting, um, because of some environmental stuff. So, um, more on that as, as I know more. Um, Eighth Street, oh, East Seventh Street, um, will be next year's project. And we'll go out for bids for that this fall. Um, before, uh, Griffin, our sustainability coordinator left, we had some discussions on solar at the water treatment plant, waste water treatment plant and the bus garage. Um, with some funding available, um, once we get a new sustainability coordinator, I think the one that we should maybe look at with getting the electric bus is the solar on the bus garage. Um, the way Griffin had explained it, um, looked like we would, um, net zero after the project, but we would have to put in money in the budget to pay for it upfront, essentially. We did that, uh, preliminary design and cost estimates for the library bathroom. I believe when we had talked, that's something that will be later on, um, and that, you know, if we decided we needed to bond, that would be a referendum, uh, vote. Because we, we can't just bond for something like that.
It says in here, the park too.
Yeah, parks too.
Does that mean we have to bond for that?
So if we want, if we, no, we're looking at trying to see where we can get cash. Because if you had to bond, then you'd have to have a referendum vote, I believe.
For the parks and the, and the library?
We don't have any dollars.
That wouldn't go on the referen- uh, in the ballot this year. I mean, we're too late for that.
Yeah.
So we're looking down the road here always.
And I think so with the bathroom at the library, uh, we talked to the state, um, with ADA items and we fixed all the things. So it's not perfect. It's not what they, um, want in the end and where we'll eventually probably do some work to it, um, but it is ADA compliant. So. Um, we will continue to get, um, some costs and different things to do, um, to the liquor store expansion. So I believe, uh, last time we talked, it was, um, to see what we could do for building. Um, so we'll continue to work on that as we work on our budget. It was in here last year about con- uh, consideration for some safer routes to school grants. I did leave that in there. Um, we will be meeting next week with the school and the sheriff's office about, um, some vehicle backing up and kind of what we can do in that area. So, um, left it in there just in case we, we need to talk about in our budget about funds for, for any safe routes to school type of, um, items. Um, we're doing some equipment replacement listing. Uh, we'll prepare a five-year capital project and then a five-year capital improvement fund plan. That is what you can expect with upcoming budget items.
Thanks for the update. Uh, any questions for the city manager on her preliminary budget guidance? I think it looks like a good start to me.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think what you have listed is pretty comprehensive for everything we've talked about previously.
If there's no further discussion, we can just move on to the city manager's newsletter.
Is Jeff aware that Jerry's U-Save is in the process of a total rebuild of their convenience store? If that's anything with, uh, this going through, are you saying some environmental impact?
Because it's, because it's, they've had, from what I was understanding from the Mindot gentlemen, since there is, there is underground tanks there now, there, there might be an issue as we go through with this environmental impacts and there's things we might have to, to do. So I would assume that even though they're doing a new one, that they have already had tanks in there and it could impact that. And I would assume Jeff would know that.
I guess just, yeah, I'm sure all the tanks will be coming up and new ones going in and just if they're aware of that, but thank you.
Uh-huh.
No further discussion, I guess we can move on to the city manager's newsletter.
Um, so after, or during our park board tour, um, Mark shared that they're going to dedicate that field at Wells Park to Don Grecky. Um, so Don, um, served and volunteered his time in various ways, um, coaching over the years with Morris Little League, Morris Babe Ruth, Morris Legion Baseball, Morris Area C A Tiger Baseball, University of Minnesota Cougar Baseball, Morris Eagles Town Team Baseball and the Morris Senior League Baseball. Um, he also ran pitching camps for youth, um, during the summer through community ed. Um, so to, at tomorrow night's Little League championship game, they'll have a banner and a plaque, um, that was paid for by the Baseball Association and Alliance Club. Um, Don will be there and they will dedicate that field to him. Union negotiations, both unions, um, have reached out. Uh, we will start negotiations, um, just getting it timed, so in the next two weeks. Um, she sent a couple of dates. So, um, we'll be, we'll be having our first meeting with that. Our wage and benefit study, uh, we have all our job descriptions back. We've been working with ABDO, um, for pointing out each position, um, seeing where, where they feel they fall or where we feel some of them fell. And then, um, having some more discussions, um, on, on all of that. So they're thinking that the study should be done around the end of July. Um, once they have that done, we can present to you kind of what, what they found, how it impacts, um, us moving forward and how, how that'll impact too with, with union negotiations. Um, moving expense, so as you know, uh, we've had quite a, quite a shorting housing, housing shortage here in Morris. Um, I've been looking for over a year for a house, um, that is affordable for, for me and my kids. Um, so I did move to the area, moved last week, bought a house in Alberta. So, um, not in town, but was affordable enough for, for me to, to do so and, and to find something. So, um, the contract did state that the moving expense was to be paid out after I bought a house in town. Um, I would ask that it be paid, um, even though I'm not in town, um, based solely on, on our housing shortage. So.
I guess I can throw it out to the council. Do you want us to take action on that tonight or is that something we should?
We can talk about it next time if you want to, but if you wanna have some conversations.
I'll just throw it back to the council and see what they have to say. I guess we can decide from there after we have a little discussion about it, but.
In the hiring process, that was part of the, the reasoning was to try to get our city manager to live in our community. So I, I think that's sort of defeating the purpose, but I, we gotta live by our rules. We're, our boards are different things. We're expecting our members to be in our community. And we can't force you to live by contract or agreement with any of our employees, with our fire department, with our city employees. But I just think that was a perk or a bonus to be in your community. So I guess I, I feel that's why it was offered to have you in our community. Obviously, you're in a smaller community. You're not gonna have some of the perks. It's gonna be less expensive is probably why you purchased out of the community into a smaller town. So I feel, yeah, it was to help compensate if you probably had to pay a little more to get a house in our community.
I guess I'm in favor of leaning it as a contract stated, you know, it was to get into more. So, I mean, I know there's circumstances that didn't allow that, but, uh, um, I think I'm, 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 I'm in the, I'm with Jeff on that too. It'd be nice to be in the community. It'd be nice to be in Morris. We do have a problem finding houses that are affordable for, for all this stuff. But, um, it is kind of one of those deals that we wanted to move to more. So I'm not in favor of paying it out at this time.
Councilmember Corrells, do you have any comments?
And I guess even though we put our, out here, Kim isn't gonna say either, so I'm not really in favor of.
Yeah, I, I guess.
Going through and saying it today till.
Just sit and work on it or sleep on it until our next meeting?
Has a chance to make her point towards the two.
Yeah, I mean, my, when I read through this originally, I, I stopped at that point and I've gone back and forth on it. Personally, I have and, and I don't have a, I guess I'm punting more than anything. Um, you know, I, I, I understand the point. That's what hit me originally. But at the same point, you know, I, I understand from your standpoint, the, the moving fees and, and things of that nature as well, right? So I, I see it from both the personal side and the, and the business side. So I, I've gone back and forth a half dozen times since reading this originally. Um, and I don't necessarily have a good, honestly have a good, uh, firm, you know, one way or the other on it, because I can see it from both sides.
I guess my, my feelings on it is, uh, it's not our city manager's fault. We didn't have housing, appropriate housing that she could afford. And I think we all know what the process involved in hiring her to begin with. And I guess I'm just glad she found a place to live. So we wouldn't rather be looking at having to find another city manager. She's an employee of the city. We've had employees in the past that lived out of town, worked in our town. And I know it's, it was an incentive that was offered, but given the current market conditions and the housing situation that we find ourselves in in our community, I just, uh, I think we could probably be a little bit more, I'm not sure what the right word is. Just, uh, recognize that fact that, you know, given, I know you've tried several times to find places and looked at a lot of different places, but it's not a decision we have to make tonight. And I guess I'm with, uh, I'm guess with, I'm with Brian on this. That we should probably wait till councilmember Velikson gets back and we'll just table that decision until the next meeting.
Sounds good. Um, going to the tree board, uh, the tree board met to approve their bylaws. Um, I think once all of the, all of the boards approve their bylaws, then I'll bring them all so we can do them all at once. Um, one thing that'll probably change in all of them and then, um, we'll probably change the, the board and commission guidelines. We'll, um, in there, it states that the chair and vice chair can't serve more than two consecutive years. For sure, two of the boards really didn't, um, appreciate that in there. Um, and made some good points on, on getting it out of there. So, um, the tree board approved theirs with it changed. Um, we'll just change it when we, um, we'll just change the boards and commission guidelines when we bring all those back. So all have, all be that way to take that out of there. Um, we discussed the budget guidance, um, the charter commission. So I emailed Tori about coming out to present to the, uh, to the charter commission and the council to speak on what a charter is, how it difference from a, differs from a statutory city and then what the members' roles will be as charter commissioners. So she stated that it was previously discussed about presenting after a meeting. Um, so I gave her our August dates to see if she could do one of those. Um, so if it works to do what, do it after the meeting, I guess I'll, um, works for the fourteenth or the twenty-seventh, if most of you will be here those days, um, I'll just have, reach out to the charter commission members and have them come that night, probably about six.
Yeah, after our regular meeting?
Yeah.
That'd be fine. We have to change our meeting for August anyway, so that'll be coming up next year, but.
August, August.
Cause that's the primary day of the next scheduled meeting?
Yep.
I think that's. Be good. I don't know what's the council think and what works for you guys.
Yeah, since the, the meeting, the thirteenth will be switched to the fourteenth if, you know, is there one that works better, the fourteenth or the twenty-seventh?
I guess it doesn't matter. It'd be the one.
Yeah, I should be here for both of them. I know originally she was gonna come and that was gonna be one of our, I believe, one of our work sessions that I was gonna replace.
Yeah, we did talk about that too, having her come to a work session instead, but.
Totally, totally fine with either one on my end.
Yeah, but then we won't do that until October.
Yeah.
So.
Well, it's, uh, I think August, the fourteenth worked, either one worked for me, so.
Okay. Well, we'll just plan at the fourteenth. I'll get ahold of all those on, that have agreed to, to be a charter commissioner. And, um, that works for the majority of them and we'll just set that ti- that date.
Okay.
Um, also with the tree board, I forgot to mention, they are, um, they met today. They're working on an Emerald Ash Bore plan, um, since it has been located in, in an adjoining county. Um, we're kind of working to see what, what our steps would be, um, and getting a plan in place for if it were to ever come. So, uh, one of the biggest things that, that they talked about today was, um, trying to get out education material to the public. Um, kind of about what to do if it, if it comes, um, how, how to, how to do things. And then to have some discussions with the county, um, since it'll be a countywide thing, kind of where we, where we need to, to put the trees, when we cut them down, when we need to cut them down. Cause there are certain timeframes with this. Um, if you find it, you shouldn't cut it until after October first. Um, so different things that, that we'll need to, to put a plan in place, get together. Um, biggest thing right now is probably some education material, um, for the public. So they are aware of what should be done, how it should be done, um, et cetera, if found. So.
That's a wrap on that. Any questions for, from the council to the city manager regarding the newsletter? I just wanted to share, I think Don Grecky, I'm looking forward to that. I remember him actually working with me when I was in Little League. I mean, I didn't certainly make it to the major leagues, but he was, uh, instrumental. He helped a lot of kids. He poured his whole heart and soul into, uh, what he did and the influence he had on kids over the years. I don't think you can even, uh, add it all up, but. It'll be be exciting tomorrow night. Anything else for the city manager at all on that, otherwise, uh, we'll move on to board updates? Anything, uh, that any of you would like to share regarding the various boards and so forth that you sit on?
So Beck would beat me to the one from earlier today, um, the other thing that came out of, uh, the the previous. Tree board meeting, um, is that they, uh, are looking at their fall planting, um, so we should be seeing something just preliminarily. Where where they're looking to plant for their fall planting coming up.
Okay. All my meetings are yet to happen this week, so I don't really have a lot to report on my end, anything else, anybody else would like to share? Hearing none, we have, uh, other business that have before us regarding that change of August thirteenth, and then we. Do we have to make a motion on that, or do we all, yeah, we have to make a motion on that, a formal motion, so I'll entertain a motion from from the council to change that date to. We talked about August fourteenth.
I'll make a motion changing our August thirteenth regular meeting to August fourteenth at the same time.
I have a second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to move our August thirteenth meeting to the fourteenth, same meeting date and time. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Informational items, uh, I have none. Um, at this, at this portion of our meeting, we are going to go into a closed session. We are closing per Minnesota State Statute thirteen D as in Delta dot zero five. Sub paragraph three, uh, C, closing the meeting to discuss the potential sale of property and to discuss the asking price. The property is parcel number twenty dash eighteen twenty-seven dash zero zero zero, this is a portion of Skyview Park. So that was the special statement, so at this time I can close the regular meeting, right?
Mm-hmm.
I will close the regular.